All right, we will resume this meeting. And next up, we have New and Unfinished Business Body worn Camera MOU with Commonwealth Attorney, R 2024-51.
I believe I'm going to speak to this item. And we have Eric Law here to fill in any blanks and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
As you see in your packets, we have a resolution for you to consider as 2024-51. It describes how in 2019, the state's budget language contained language that because of the body worn cameras used by the Sheriff's Department and other agencies, they were providing for an Assistant Commonwealth Attorney. Or in lieu of that, you could establish a memorandum of understanding with your Commonwealth Attorney for other funding as a means to address all the body worn camera footage that would need to be reviewed. So since 2019, in lieu of hiring an additional Assistant Commonwealth Attorney here in Nelson, we have maintained an MOU with Commonwealth Attorney's Office, providing additional local funding to accommodate the additional workload resulting from the requirement to review, redact, and present footage from body worn cameras. Commonwealth Attorney's Office wishes to amend the existing memorandum of agreement with the county to increase the amount of local funding provided in FY '25 to $57,318. This is an increase of $25,000 from the current, or the FY '24 MOU of $32,318. And because these are unbudgeted local funds, this request is coming to you all for consideration. So I should note that beginning July 1st, 2024, the minimum comp board salary for another Assistant Commonwealth Attorney is $75,705. So it is still a better deal to provide the supplemental funding to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. So I would recommend favorable consideration of the resolution if you are so inclined. Well, first, I suppose, do you have any questions about the information provided or anything Mr. Law can answer?
And from what I'm seeing, the difference in the request versus the comp board salary for an Assistant Commonwealth Attorney is just over $18,000 difference.
That seems correct.
Is there a point where there's so much video footage that we will have to go to a full-time person? We have more deputies, we have more staff.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. Mr. Law can speak to how much footage they're actually reviewing.
I could maybe address that. And I think that's part of the reason for the request change. We're getting a lot more footage than we were about a year ago, to be frank with this board. I mean, there's an ethical opinion out there that says we have to watch every minute. And it's fine if there's one deputy on traffic stop. Now that we're fully staffed, there might be three deputies on DUI. And not every single minute is entirely important, but I still have to watch it. So to answer your question, there may be a point where that becomes necessary. We're not yet at that point. If we are, it's probably going to be a few years down the road. But yeah, that's a big part of it. Additional, a big part of it is, you know, most citizens interact with the police on traffic stops, speeding, reckless driving by speed, things like that. And we have seen a massive uptick in that in the general district court docket. And frankly, I have been spending most of my time with the Wintergreen Police Officer murder case. And when I'm in general district court, stuck in this, primarily with this position would be stuck dealing with speeding tickets, it's hard for me to put up the necessary time. So that's part of the request. But answer your question, there may be a time, we're not there yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Y'all have any other questions while I'm up here?
Anybody? No, thank you.
I'll just add too, if we don't have, if we do not have a position, we also don't have the benefit cost as well. So that's another area.
Another savings. Very good. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we amend Resolution R 2024-51, Nelson County Board Supervisors increasing local funding for FY '25 body worn camera memorandum of understanding Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Amanda?
Mr. Rodford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. All right, next, we have Sheriff's Department request.
Okay, I'm going to introduce this item and then Sheriff Embry can also come up and speak to his request. All right, the first one has to do with a Sheriff's Department grant opportunity for the Sheriff's Department that would help them achieve office accreditation. We did get some revised budgetary information just prior to the meeting today that adjusts Sheriff Embry's request. So let me do that information here. Resolution 2024-52 speaks to approval of this request. They have a DCJS grant opportunity that will provide 75% federal funding and it requires a 25% local cash match. Since this is a new grant and the cash match is unbudgeted, this is coming before you also for approval. The original request was, the 75% federal funding was $69,117, which required a 25% local cash match of $23,039. The revised grant would provide for, let's see, $30,720 in federal funding, which would require a $10,240 cash match for a total amount of $40,960. The reason for that is the original grant requested a full-time position and it has been, since been revised for Sheriff Embry to incorporate a part-time position. So I will try to remember to you, Mr. Embry, to answer any questions you might have about this request.
Thank you, Ms. McGary. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you today. I spoke privately during the break with this, with the gentleman that's seated behind me. I just want to publicly thank him on record for the very kind words he illustrated earlier today during the public comments. It means a lot that what we're doing in the community is being noticed by members of the community. So again, thank you very much, sir. As Ms. McGary stated, our office is in the process, we want to pursue accreditation standards. I heard earlier during the recognition for the Treasurer, Ms. Hicks, that her office had obtained that status several years ago under her tenure. My office is seeking the same. It's a standard that I believe that we need to achieve in this county to illustrate professionalism, the way that we go about doing things. I'm very proud of our office now, but there's more that we can do. And I believe that this accreditation process is the first step in that direction. As Ms. McGary had illustrated, we had submitted a grant earlier this year to DCJS for a, for several things. That grant, the majority of that money was for a full-time position. That was for an employee that we would bring in for a newly created position that would handle accreditation management. That is something that every agency needs, whether it's from a civilian standpoint or whether it's from active personnel. Since putting in for that position online, our office has been able to identify an individual that is qualified and I believe is a better fit for us in a part-time capacity. That individual is kind enough to be here with me today. She is working on getting another law enforcement agency similar in size to our agency south of here accredited. She comes very highly recommended to our department through DCJS, which will be the auditor for this accreditation process. In doing so, I believe that the part-time, we did amend this, which we found out today through DCJS. We are waiting on final approval. The reduction in numbers reflects the full-time status versus a part-time status. The plan is this, this grant, it became effective, we were awarded this back in June, became effective as of July 1st, so it's already in process if we do accept it. This is her 15-month tenure. This employee, if approved by you all today, is ready to go and ready to start work. My plan and intentions are to allow her to work in a part-time capacity, at which time she is not only getting our office up to date with standards through CLEPSY, through state accreditation standards, but she is also in the process of training one of our current employees, one of our civilians, to take over this tenure at the end of this grant. So again, I want to preface that I am not looking to continue this after 15 months. The candidate that is here today that I believe can get this job achieved for us is not from the Virginia area. She is a Liberty University student that can give us the part-time capacity physically being in this building on a weekly basis. But she has aspirations to return back to her state. So I believe, given 15 months, we can get to where we need to be. And she will have air full-time employee trained, who is currently on payroll, that can take over the duties that need to be done so that we can maintain this accreditation status. So that is the direction that I believe we need to go. It saves, it saves this body and this community money while giving us the maximum, the advantages of being accredited and the future is very big for us if we were able to achieve this status. So as far as grant money and future things that we need for this agency and this community. So that is the direction. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
So, so that all makes good sense to me, and I think it's a great initiative. And thank you for bringing it to us.
Yes, sir.
Do we have to amend the resolution with the different amounts of money? Or do we accept them here and then do some sort of payback? How does that all work?
I have an email from the grant monitor from this past week. As far as the logistics of that, I would have to get further clarification either from the DCJS representative or...
So the resolution you have, the 2024-52, you could approve it as amended, as presented and amended. And we can fill in the correct numbers if you're comfortable with that. Or I can, we can go through the lines and I can give you the correct numbers to go in right now. I basically read them earlier, but yes.
So, so your recommendation is we just, we approve this amended resolution?
Yes, yes, sir.
What's the, just, I know you mentioned them early, just if you don't mind.
Sure. Oh, okay. So the new, let's see, the new federal funding amount for a grant we would be accepting would be $30,720. The required 25% local match of that is $10,240 for a total grant amount of $40,960.
So that's changing the 92,000 is now 40?
Yes.
And then the local match is 10,000 down from 23?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I believe in the final, now therefore be resolved, the local cash match there would also change to 10,240.
10,240?
Yes, sir.
Everybody clear on the changes, the amendments that we're going to propose?
You have complete faith that a part-time person, a college student, part-time person is going to get this done for you?
I, I do with the fact that it's currently being drawn in at another locality here in central Virginia. And again, I have full faith that a ranking official within DCJS actually reached out and referred that, so yes.
That's a lot.
All right, so any other comments from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion that we approve Resolution R 2024-52. Do you have something to add?
No, no.
Okay, okay, all right. Nelson County Board of Supervisors, Department of Criminal Justice Services, DCJS, grant acceptance, Sheriff's Department accreditation.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Rodford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Very good.
And then the second one, I had a few questions with staff after.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution R 2024-53. Ms. McGary or Sheriff Embry? Who's, who's up?
I can go first.
Okay.
Just a little bit of background on this. In August of 2017, the Board Supervisors approved a policy change to the application of local salary supplements for constitutional offices. Sheriff Embry is asking for another policy amendment related to this August 2017 policy. Basically, what he's asking for is, well, let me back up. So at that time, the board approved the use of any vacancy savings for retention, no, for attraction at the time of new employees. Mr. Sheriff Embry is asking to also be able to use those funds for retention. So that just involves amending the current policy to read that upon termination from employment of a compensation board, employee with an earned supplement, budgeted supplement funds may be applied to the salaries of new hires as a means of recruitment or to the salaries of existing employees as a means of retention. That last piece is the new part, the means of retention. That is his request and it's reflected in R 2024-53.
Oh, just a couple of questions as this relates to pay, pay studies and all that. So this will be the supplemental funding. In the event someone who's receiving, let's just say, $10,000 supplemental funding, he would then have full discretion to redistribute that as he saw fit, right? Essentially? How does that discretion come down? Because I know the pace, we just did the pay studies, so that's what I'm trying to understand, how this can fit both those things.
Right, so yes, basically, it would, it would allow him to use those funds within the fiscal year that they were generated.
Okay.
To either attract a new person or if you had an employee, let's say, that said, hey, I've gotten an offer from a neighboring county, you know, I want to go to work for them, he could use whatever supplement differential he might have from a vacancy to retain that person.
And that would essentially be going above and beyond potentially the pay study, right?
Absolutely. It potentially could, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I guess the only thing, and again, I'm supportive of doing this, I'm just thinking of instances, obviously Angie Hicks, who's been part of the county for 30 years, she has 30 years of county supplements. Does, I'm speaking hypothetically, so does that office then get to redistribute that?
So that would be an option for that office. This would apply to all constitutional offices as written, because it's a policy, you know, for all of them equally. I don't know if you...
Is there a way to break that up?
I mean, you could potentially, but I'm not sure of the fairness in that.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just learning, I'm just walking through this because of the pay studies we just done. How does this then impact?
Right.
Going forward? Because would, would that potentially mean some county staff? There's, I could see a scenario, and I'm just talking out loud, I'm not, I'm not going after you, Mr. Embry, where you, I could see constitutional officers foregoing hiring some people in an effort to utilize the supplement funding. Does that make sense? County supplement funding?
Absolutely.
Because they could potentially do that. I don't know.
They could, I'm not sure that might...
Oh, no, I know that.
...save their office, but...
Yeah. What are the uses of supplemental funding? What's the range of uses that can go towards?
So right now, it's able to be used to, yeah, attract a new employee. You have a new employee coming in, you have, say, $2,000 from a previous employee that left a higher salary, then you can use those funds to up their salary offer.
Right. So that's already kind of...
But it has to be done within the fiscal year those savings are generated. That's the other piece of it.
Okay.
So there's no potential of an employee getting a raise, essentially? They continue getting that raise the next year, but then we hire that position back? You know, another constitutional position? So in the end, we're out whatever that raise was for the following year?
Typically, typically, the county would realize unused supplements the following year. All right, immediately?
Correct. Yes, if they don't get used and they go back into the general fund, they're not used.
And that, yeah, and I'm trying to figure out, how is it that we can attract the specific individuals and, you know, maybe if you do have that outlier, I've done this in my own business, like if I have an outlier, like, yeah, I have this range, but wow, this person, I'm going to do X now. You know, how does that exist in the context of local governments is, you know, interesting one to figure out. Interesting.
In subsequent years, supplemental funding would not enter into the equation because that would then become part of their base salary?
Right.
So it would be a recurring cost to the county at that time?
Yes, yes. I mean, when it's, when the position's vacated, it's a recurring cost at that time. So it just means that status going forward if it's utilized.
Are you understanding my concern that it's actually a higher recurring cost if they hire back?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yes, but they would only have so much salary available to them to do that.
So these people are getting a pay bump, but the next year on July 1st, they could get a demotion, essentially? Well, not demotions, around...
No.
Less money.
If it's vacant, if there's a vacant position.
It's just, it would be more of a shifting of funds, so it doesn't really create necessarily an increase.
So the county, realistically, speaking this way, let's imagine that person stays, hypothetically, the one who's left. Basically, that salary just follows that position now. And that other position over here, I guess, it really, the budget wouldn't change at all. It's just where the, what would be changing for the county is not realizing that supplement back to the county.
Right.
And that is typically historic.
No, I guess my concern is, so you and I...
Yeah.
I'm fired, left, whatever.
Right, whatever it is, yeah.
Okay?
20K, 10K, whatever it is.
You get, let's say, 10K more a year, a year, okay? So now, instead of getting paid $60,000, you're getting paid 70.
Beyond the pay stuff, yes.
Yes. So then, in a year, Ernie is hired for my position. Now we're paying, still paying you 10 grand more and we have another position that we're paying the full thing. Is that correct? Is there a potential that...
It's hard to think of every scenario.
Sure.
So I think maybe you're thinking of it as the position that's vacated, let's say it's a $50,000 position. And you said 10,000, but now went to someone else.
Sure.
There's only 40,000 left now to hire somebody. We're not hiring somebody for a $50,000 position.
Thank you.
I thought that's where you were going with that, but I wanted to make sure.
That's the clarification.
Exactly.
Because the pool, the money is still the same.
The pool doesn't change.
I see.
There's just...
So you could be shooting yourself in the foot and not find someone for the 40,000.
There could be someone else later who would, okay.
Well, that's a fun game.
You know, I, I guess, I can appreciate that flexibility given to the constitutional officers so they can have that discretion to seek these people.
It could also be used where, let's use your $10,000 example, and let's just say you're going to hire two people and give them both a $5,000 bonus, sign-on, you know, type of situation, where it's not a recurring.
I don't know about that.
I don't know if it's, if you can do that.
It's, you all have an approved budget.
We don't have approved budget.
Okay, never mind.
Only we can do that as a board.
It's not part of this policy.
Okay.
I like the idea, a sign-on bonus.
I was just trying to look at it a way that it wouldn't be a recurring, you know, bump in salary is what I was thinking, but yeah.
A lot of counties do do a sign-on.
Yeah.
So I, I can appreciate it at this point with that understanding now. But, you know, I, I would be, I was sitting here and I was looking, I was trying to play this, just like, wow, and I was like, maybe is it like 150 UK, you know, if we're not realized? So I'm supportive of it. I would be cautious as to, as we keep our eyes out to see how this plays out, you know?
What is the average number of funds that, that we have that aren't used?
It's typically not a lot. I mean, I think currently the Sheriff's Department may have $2,000.
Not anymore.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Used to be a lot.
It's not, I mean, obviously, when you have somebody retire like Angie Hicks, who may have built up supplements over the years, you're going to have more at that point. But typically, it's not a great deal. And I just wanted to reiterate too, that, you know, the spirit of this change is for retention.
Sure.
The county doesn't currently have a merit-based pay system. It's not, oh, this person's doing a great job, I'm just going to give them $500.
Right.
It's, it's to retain people that...
I get it, I understand.
Potentially are leaving.
And that's not changing our algorithm too, basically.
We all ready to?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Ready.
I'll entertain a motion that we approve Resolution R 2024-53, Nelson County Board of Supervisors, Amendment to the 2017 Local Supplement Policy for Constitutional Offices.
Motion made, sir.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Amanda?
Mr. Rodford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
All right.
I am going to be curious, though, how this impacts, how we perceive the pay study. I don't know. How do you advertise now?
I mean, we still advertise...
You'd advertise the pay study amount.
Yeah, we advertise the beginning pay range.
And then that discretion would just happen at the table.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. All right, moving on. Ms. McGary, we have authorization of participation in Kroger opioid abatement settlement.
Currently, the county participates in multiple other opioid abatement settlements. This is just another one from Kroger and its related corporate entities. They need a copy of a signed resolution, authorizing me to electronically authorize our participation. We don't know how much we would receive from this because it depends on how many localities opt to participate with the state in this. And then at that time, they determine what each locality's allocation is. So...
I feel like you've been voting on this for like a while.
I don't know how many more we, there are to come forward, but, so we have Resolution 2024-54, which authorizes us to participate in post-settlement of the opioid-related claims against Kroger and its related corporate entities. And then we're directed to execute the appropriate documents to affect the county's participation.
Yep, ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Resolution R 2024-54, approval of the county's participation in the proposed settlement of the opioid-related claims against Kroger, its related corporate entities, directing the county attorney to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlement.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Rodford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Yes. Very good, thank you. Next, we have the 2025 Regional Housing Summit sponsorship request.
So this is a fairly easy one, potentially. So the 2025 Regional Housing Summit that's put on by the Thomas Jefferson Planning District is just requesting a sponsorship for the summit. I believe last year, the board authorized a $1,000 sponsorship, which is the partnership level. You can be, do a networking sponsorship of 5,000, a breakout sponsor of 2,500, or then this partnership sponsor for 1,000 or any other amount you so desire.
So kind of related to this entity, I mean, those top, those three tiers are really more for like corporations and whatnot to participate. If we wanted to opt in, I guess one question is, Ernie, did you go last year?
Yes.
Did you go, did you enjoy it?
Yeah.
You thought it was pretty good. I really, last year, we had a pretty good makeup of speakers just talking about housing-related stuff in our region. I think short-term rentals will actually make, I also spoke for the...
I was going to say, wait a minute, you spoke!
I did spoke at that one, so it was great. It's actually the best.
You patting yourself on the back.
Ernie actually skipped one, I don't have, you know?
I knew what you were going to say.
That's fair. You know, I, I really do strongly thank you guys. If you do get an opportunity to participate, it's, it's worth it. Just let staff know. If we are going to do any sponsorship towards this, you know, 500... If we are gonna do any sponsorship towards this, you know, 500 bucks to 1,000, I think makes sense to me. It's up, it's up to you guys, you know, I'm not heartbroken.
How much is a ticket?
That's a good question. How much is a ticket?
If you wanna go, pay for a ticket.
Yeah.
I don't think it says in here, and I'm not sure.
It's a ticket, personally. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna suggest we revisit this later because I need to talk to staff about something on this.
When does a decision need to be made on this?
This isn't happening until March.
Yeah.
So we got time. If we can put this on the, maybe September, October.
Yeah, we'll postpone.
Yep.
Postpone that. Thank you. All right, next, we have FY 24-25 Salary and Classification System, R 2024-55.
Fair consideration is Resolution 2024-55. This basically affects the board supervisors' pay raise of 3% or the applicable equity market adjustment resulting from the recent pay study. That's the third piece of the study. This just affects what the board approved within FY 25 budget. Additionally, we are proposing that in order to maintain competitive market rates as of July 1, 2024, that the pay ranges assigned to each position and pay classification be increased by one-half of, of the salary adjustment rate, which in this case would be one and a half percent. So that means all of the pay classes would move up by one and a half percent. And hopefully, in, I don't know however many years we do another pay study, we won't be so far behind the market at that point. So we're just trying to, trying to find a way to try to keep up a little bit each year so that it's not such a big hit next time we do a study potentially.
All right, do we have any input, questions from the board? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I, I have, I have one consideration that I'm just gonna throw out. I don't know that it's going to affect how I feel about this overall. But, you know, we make it, and we make it extremely difficult to, to give all of the county employees, and I'm including the schools in that, the same kind of equity in terms of, you know, percentage salary adjustments. When we take steps like this, doing something internally for, for administration and staff and county staff, if we, if we don't make it at all possible to make those same kind of salary adjustments available to all county employees, which would include the schools, then, then it, it looks a little bit inequitable. And actually, something like this might make it even a little more inequitable than it is already since the schools aren't budgeted enough money to be able to give those types of salary adjustments that we would like to give people in the county. And that's, oh, you know, to me, that is problematic because, you know, I for one, I don't know if anyone shares this, look at all county employees as all county employees. I'd like to see them all, you know, kind of held to the same, to the same level of compensation. So, you know, I'm in, I'm in favor of the increase at this, at this county level for this. I think that, you know, that, you know, the argument that you put forth is really good. We want to be able to keep competitive and we want to be able to, you know, keep further studies from making it more difficult for us to achieve the goals we want to. I just would like to see more consensus on the, you know, on the board of supervisors to look at all county employees through an equal lens to try to see if we can, at some point in the future, we weren't successful this year, in the future, being able to afford the same benefits to all county employees.
Two things. One, of course, we just finished the 2025 budget where raises were budgeted in. So the number you gave us for the increase is now wrong, right? Or this was planned all along?
Yeah, well, the numbers given were, of course, the snapshot at that time, which, you know, people have come and gone and, you know, some things have changed. So, you know, there may be some adjustment in those numbers. But the basis for this is the budget adoption, which contained the funding for 3% raise or the equity adjustment based on the pay study.
Well, you have a 3% based on what the employees were making before, a one and a half percent. Is that?
No.
Okay.
No, so it would be 3% as of your salary at June 30th. The one and a half percent would just adjust the scale so that anybody coming in would, would have a, the beginning salary would be one and a half percent higher. County employees have a probationary period, not constitutional offices, but county and positions have a six-month probationary period. So, in which time, in which time they can't get a pay raise. So they would experience the one and a half percent higher starting salary at the start of their pay range. And then, once they were out of their probationary period, they would get the balance of that to equal a total of 3% at that point.
Which was budgeted.
Right.
Yeah.
The second thing I have to say is the money we give to the school board, it's up to them whether they want to give that raise or not, not up to us.
Any other questions on R 2024-55? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we approve Resolution R 2024-55 Nelson County Board of Supervisors, Fiscal Year 2024-25 Amendment to Salary and Classification System.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Rodford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And next up, we have the Livingston Sidewalk Improvements TAP Grant Memorandum of Agreement.
Fair consideration is Resolution 2024-56. This provides authorization for the county to enter into an agreement with VDOT to accept FY 24-25 Transportation Alternatives Program grant funding for the Front Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. So the Commonwealth Transportation Board has awarded 2.5 million funding to Nelson for the Front Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. There is a required 20% local match, which is 625,000. This provides a maximum cost of 3,125,000. A new rule associated with TAP grants is that the locality must also commit to, in addition to the 20% local match, you have to commit to finishing the project. So whatever that cost estimate is, and in this case, it's 3,876,495 dollars, the county is committing to funding that difference, which is, as Mr. Bane mentioned earlier today, 751,495 dollars. Now, the actual cost could vary from the estimate, but in crafting this agreement, they have to go with what the cost estimate at the time is.
And kind of to further into this, the county at this point, we're gonna be well even more positively postured to solicit other grants to help bridge those costs.
That's correct. So I'm in conversations with VDOT on some other potential funding sources that we could use to provide the local match. They've broken it out in over three fiscal years, so our FY 25 match would be 75,600. The FY 26 match would be 212,248 dollars. And then in FY 27, it would be expected to be 1,088,647 dollars.
Sure.
So we do have a little time to try to find other ways to fund that, the bigger piece in FY 27 is.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
And we will also have, I guess, in that timeframe, an additional opportunity to apply for another TAP grant. Correct?
Yes, we should.
So, to draw some similarity to another project, the Crozay Tunnel, I think, was an example of multiple TAP grants, right?
That's correct.
So we could find ourselves in a similar situation where we find, all right, we need another, let's just spit on 500 grand. You know, we revisit them, we're like, hey, we found this, a couple of things changed, this is what it looks like. Usually, once you start getting them, the propensity gets a lot easier to get the next one. And in addition to this, other grants, whether it's a CDPG grant or any of those other entities, once they've seen a commitment like this to make improvements, you also have an opportunity to see potentially some infrastructure grants, some additional ones. So our hope is that we're gonna keep our eyes out and work upfront, centered with water authority and finding whatever may exist as we open up holes and sidewalks to try to get the infrastructure that lasts a long time. So, I've got it, and this is taking six years, so this is pretty, this is very exciting.
So, I mean, just to clarify, so since the tunnel TAP grants, that program has changed where you can only get two and a half million per project.
Oh, per project, wow, so they did, that one probably burned them.
So, yes, so that's the most we can get for this particular project. If we have another application for some other part of the street or the second phase, then that would be a totally different project.
Yeah.
Are you totally slamming down what he just said, or he said that there's a possibility for more grants?
You're telling me there's change.
Other grants, not this, not this particular program, potentially.
So, he was all sunshine and rainbows, what is the actual reality that there are other grants that can help with it?
Well, I mean, we're looking into that to, to see what those options are. VDOT's helping us see what, what they consider an appropriate local match. Because some things, you, you can't match federal funds with other federal funds a lot of times. So we're trying to figure that piece out with their help.
Yeah. And there's also some private sector ones that exist as well. Whatever those could be.
So, I want to take a step back and, you know, we kind of jumped right into the details of this. But I think we need to just step back and look at this for a second and congratulate everybody who was involved in this grant and this money being awarded to our community. This was a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of people putting in a lot of effort. So I just think we need to congratulate everybody for the work that they put into this and the impact this is gonna have on our community. So I just want to say, congratulations. So, thank you all. What is the pleasure of the board? Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
It is my pleasure to make a motion to approve Resolution R 2024-56 Nelson County Board of Supervisors, Authorization to Enter Into Agreement with VDOT to Accept FY 24-25 Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Funding for Front Street Sidewalk Improvement Project.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, Amanda?
Mr. Rodford?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Very good, congratulations. Yes.
I'll note too that this is gonna be a VDOT administered project, so it will not be an increased burden for our staff other than just paying our local match when we get invoiced from VDOT.
So.
Just fitting in some meetings.
Just a follow-up on Mr. Brown's presentation earlier. And he, he kind of seemed to be, when we were discussing some of this and some of the ideas and things, he was very hands-off and make sure your planner does this. So that led me to believe they weren't, so.
Yeah, I think, well, I wasn't able to jump in and clarify that. But no, VDOT's gonna administer the project. And we'll just need to make sure that if we have any input, such as what we were discussing at that point with the parking things, that we, we get that in.
I would, I would certainly hope we have a lot of input.
Yeah.
Very good. Again, thank you, staff and Jesse.
And thanks to the PDC, they, they worked very hard on that.
Yes. This goes back to Chip. He was one of the first people who brought up, he says, I know we've been asked for a lot of TAP grants, but we need to start now. And he's right. These projects, you have to start, and after they've seen you on their list a couple of times, then they start taking you pretty seriously, so.
Well, again, thank you and congratulations to everybody directly impacted by this.
We are too.
All right, we ready to move on to? We ready to move on to reports? Mrs. McGary?
Fairly short report for you all today. We've taken care of a lot of pending business already during the meeting. As far as the Route 151 speed study results meeting, I'm still waiting on a date in times from VDOT staff to get this set up. So as soon as I know something, we'll pass it along to you all. We have been approved for two grants from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, the regional grant approvals for FY 25. The first one is a continuation for support of the Region 10 Crisis Intervention Team Assessment Center, the C-TAC Expansion and Crisis Response Project for a second fiscal year. This funding is 1,162,960 dollars. Almaron County serves as the fiscal agent for this grant, and there's no local match required for that. The second one is a new grant, I believe I reported on at some point in the last maybe month or two. It was a new application on behalf of the members of the Offender Aid Restoration, OAR, and Jefferson Area Community Corrections. They manage recovery courts within the region, including Nelson. 388,437 dollars in FY 25 funding will be used to expand regional specialty docket services, which is what they call recovery courts, to include care counselors. Charlottesville City is the fiscal agent for this grant, and there's no local match requirement. Let's see, the status of the Service Authority's Livingston Sewer Recap Project. There's no real change right now. A draft support agreement has been submitted by the Service Authority to USDA or US for their approval. And if approved, it will be presented to both the board supervisors and Service Authority Board for your approval consideration in the next couple of months, as soon as, as we get it back and have the okay to proceed. No change on the Department of Social Services building. Purchased agreement for a parcel of property on Calhoun Drive, joining the county-owned property, which will allow for the required stormwater retention pond associated with widening and paving of a planned roadway there is in process and expected to be complete this month. Took another look at our preliminary FY 24 and fiscal year projections, and this is on a cash basis. Our revenue collections on a cash basis for real and personal property taxes as of June 30th were about 99.07% of budgeted at 20,413,352 dollars and 99.08% of budgeted at 6,29,730 dollars respectively. So while a collection of other revenue, local revenues either exceeded or fell short of the budgeted amounts, on a net basis, our revenues from local sources exceeded the budgeted amount by 0.47% or 182,756 dollars for a total local revenue collection of 38,319,954 dollars. Revenues from the state collected were 93.48% of budgeted at 5,241,776 dollars, with remaining 6.22% being related to delayed reimbursement of FY 24. Public assistance expenditures that will be approved back by our auditors and other grants whose expenditures or reimbursements will be carried forward into FY 25. Similarly, federal revenues collected were 85.38% of budgeted at 1.5 million, with remaining 14.62% being related to delayed reimbursement of public assistance expenditures that will be approved back by our auditors and other federal grants that will be carried forward to FY 25. Our auditors will apply expenditures and collections for fiscal year 24 through September, which will include adjustments for items prepaid in June that are actually FY 25 expenditures. As of July 3, 2024, on a cash basis, our revenues exceeded expenditures by 2,335,621 dollars. And attached are the revenue and expenditure detail reports for the end of fiscal year. And attached are the revenue and expenditure detail reports for the end of fiscal year. We have issued the 2026 Real Property Assessment Mass Appraisal, RFP. It was issued on June 20th with responses due July 15, 2024, next Monday. We'll then schedule vendor interviews, and the contract award is anticipated to be done in July and August, or July or August, depending on timing, with the work to commence in September and October, September or October of 2024. Our hired firm will begin with the sales study, and the bulk of reassessment work will be done during the calendar of 2025. Final completion of the reassessment will be contractually by December 31, 2025, and assessments effective January 1, 2026. There will be informal hearings with assessors as requested by citizens, followed by border dequalification appeal hearings during the February, March, 2026 timeframe. Staff has completed the directive to track and chart the last four fiscal years of data for both meals and lodging tax, that's tax collection. This will be updated and provided monthly going forward. And those charts and data are also attached to my report. So in terms of our FY '25 board retreat, staff is looking at coordinating a September or October board retreat. If you could please provide us with any dates in September or October that are definitely not good for you, that would be helpful. The third and fourth weeks of the month after our regular board meetings are ideal, such as September 16 through the 27th and October 14 through the 25th, if possible. So once we can kind of narrow down a good timeframe for you all, we can start talking about logistics with Chair Parr here.
I mean, while we're on it, does anybody, I mean, did you all see this before and look at your calendars for this? Does anybody have any hard no's in either that September or October blocks?
September works a little better for me.
Yeah, I'd rather do September.
And so everybody's good, if we picked any date between September 16th and 27th right now, there's no hard no's.
Don't do the 16th.
17th through the 27th, let's look at that. We'll talk about it later.
It's my one-year anniversary, so.
So the 17th, 16th, 17th, and 18th?
Yeah, you're going to pick it on the 16th.
Yeah, 17th, we'll, we'll talk candid about those.
All right. I think that would position us well going into our next budget cycle, which will be upon us pretty shortly. So we've got to establish some goals and priorities, I think, ahead of that. All right, you should have received your department and office report for June or July. Have you taken any questions?
Yes, you know, I just wanted to point out on your TUT flex, thank you, thank you. This is great. I guess going forward in July, it'd probably be good to put an asterisk notating that that was when the increase hit.
Right.
Just so that, that... Further into this, if you look at the earlier years of FY 2021, 21, 25, you guys can see that we've missed out on millions of dollars. At least in my rough math, when I looked at it, we probably missed out on close to $2 million in tax revenue. You know? So enforcement's important, and how we do that, and this is just a tool, or at least an indicator. I also think there are many people in the hospitality industry are going to appreciate this because now they kind of have, though we don't get many trademarks in life, you know, how business is doing other than the anecdote, this is actually probably one of the more solid indicators of what's happening in our community. So, thank you. I really appreciate that.
So I think what we'll do is we'll just update it monthly, and then we'll provide it to Maureen, and she can, she has a whisper, she can push it out to business community.
When you say meals tax would be just as good an indicator of how it's really?
Yes, because...
The local flavor and their ability to spend.
Yep, yep.
Not the rich people coming in.
It's a hard, I don't know how they can differ, how they can... It would be nice, I mean, honestly, if you just looked at three or four, you could kind of get a huge indicator of where things are at. Just three or four entities. But I'm not sure how it's going, how it would play out because just Blue Mountain throws it off substantially, its entity itself, and how much meals tax they're paying.
I think as a whole, it would be an indicator.
Right, no, I agree with that at the end of the day.
And just to do, I think, the amounts shown are reflective of payments for the prior months.
Sure.
Tax levy, just missing that.
Yeah, so July money is June means.
We good?
Yep.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have board reports. Anybody have anything to share? Anybody?
I do.
Ernie?
Um, don't be shy. Yeah, the Agriculture and Forestal District Committee took a tour of the areas in Montebello that have applied to be considered an ag and forestal district up in Montebello. Did that last week, and that committee's going to be meeting soon to be giving its, its stamp in the full application of the planning commission.
Thursday, right? We're meeting Thursday, 10th?
Um, there was, there, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't really date that. I have to check it.
It's up in the air.
Again? Okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Anyway, so that's, that's...
Now she just said no. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So there was that, and it's great because Montebello is a community to where if you don't have someone showing you around, you don't, you barely know that it exists as a community, and it was a great tour. John has completed the draft of their Rural Transit Needs Assessment Study. We had a working group that I was a part of that really just reviewed the draft as it came through. And John's going to be making a presentation sometime in the near future to the board about what the results of that were. The, the Planning Commission heard the, had the public hearing on the Wild Rose Solar Farm project, and, and did, did not approve, giving it its blessing before it comes to us here at the Board Supervisors. But strangely enough, and something that I still can't get my head wrapped around, the Planning Commission voted that it did not comply with our, with our new comprehensive plan. Can't get my head wrapped around how that happened, and there was, there was virtually no discussion about it with the Planning Commission. They discussed a lot, the, you know, the pluses and minuses of the solar farm itself, but there was really no discussion about how it related with the comp plan, and yet it was turned down by the board. So there, of course, is more on that coming. The Rockfish Valley Foundation has a new exhibit on the Monica Nation. Y'all check it out. It's really excellent because it shows the settlement patterns and the activities in the Rockfish Valley, things that are hidden from most people's sight and knowledge in the area, which is, which is really excellent. Rockfish Valley Foundation has done a great job, and the Monica Nation, of course, provided lots and lots and lots of support for that. And finally, July 5th was the four-year anniversary of the cancellation of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. And the year following that, we passed a resolution celebrating the one-year anniversary of that. But since that time, an independent journalist, Jonathan Mingle, has published a book called Gaslight: The Atlantic Coast Pipeline and the Fight for America's Energy Future. It was, it, it has, it's the best job of putting together the historical document of the role Nelson County played in that historic fight. And so we have copies of this historical document. You can pass that down to Jesse for me, for the board. Hopefully, you'll be able to put that on your Nelson County bookshelf along with all the other historical books that you have. You know a lot of the people involved, a lot of them you don't. But the role that Nelson County played was indispensable, and it alludes to that in many different places in there.
I immediately see Richard Avery's name first page open.
Yeah. That's because he's an A.
Yeah.
So, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate that.
Just one update thing I'll mention on Emergency Services Council. We're going to be working on looking at the budget items for the individual departments and things that are not currently included in their budget request in any of the existing line items that happen to be missing. And I'll be bringing that to you all later this year as we go into the budget process just to see different things that aren't included. For example, one local department just spent $125,000 redoing their air packs. And that's something that, right now, the, the last time they did it, they got a grant. This time, they didn't have a grant, and that's something that, that they're paying for. So different things that, that aren't included, we're going to hopefully propose looking at their line items. That was all I have from that. Any other reports, board reports? All right, next, we have appointments.
Well, the first one's pretty easy. Ernie?
I don't know, I think we need to have a conversation about that.
I think we need to think about that.
Well, you want to do it, yes. You have applied.
Do you want to do it?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, yes, I would, I would step aside if someone lobbied real strongly to do it
because I've really enjoyed my time on there, but I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of the point where I actually contribute to some of the things that actually go on there, where long enough you get to do that, so.
Sometimes it takes a while to get your feet wet in some of these.
Really?
Yeah. All right, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move we put Ernie back on Java.
Do we need to vote on these individually? We do?
You use acclamation.
Yep. All right, we'll just do vote by acclamation. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations, Ernie.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move we put Jason Taylor on Building Code Appeals.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So I just have a question. Is it typical that we have somebody apply that's not a resident of the county? That's typical?
Yes, it can happen. And we do have Robin Meyer. She's actually at Charlottesville, resident. They are able to serve.
Right.
You can appoint them however you wish.
I got you.
We do have folks already in that capacity. I think it's Art Tech. We have a couple already.
I got you.
Mr. Taylor will be taking his dad's condition.
Yeah. Right, okay. All right, any discussion on that?
Good question.
Yeah. All right, if not, all those in favor of Jason Taylor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Very good. Have we had any applications for the vacancy on social services?
None at all. None.
Just Marshall?
No, social services.
Social services, Central District.
You got any input on that? Is that at large, or is that district specific?
No, that's district.
District specifically.
And that's central? Maybe be thinking about that, or you got any?
I've asked a few people, have not gotten anyone to step up yet, but we'll...
You want to do it?
Keep doing it.
All right. Can, is it limited to one board member on that one?
You know...
Is it a healthy thing just to leave it as one? I'm just curious.
Well, the, the board member on that, and I'm pretty sure I don't vote on that board. I'm just a advisor, so I don't think we want to do that, no. But we all need to be thinking about somebody we could approach for that. All right, jail authority, nobody?
No, Mr. Barton, he, I talked to him, he did not wish to continue serving until this time. You know, now the project is moving along, he was ready to relinquish that. That can be a board or citizen representative. He, he did suggest you may want to consider putting a board member on there for this.
Yeah, that's what I was...
I think that's the only at this time.
Yep.
Jessica, do you want a more exciting one?
What, yeah, what are the requirements of, it meets monthly?
It meets monthly, it's...
In Charlottesville?
In, yes, in Charlottesville at the regional jail. It's usually the Thursday after our board meeting, so that makes it the third, second Thursday.
Next Thursday.
So we'll be meeting on the 11th this week.
Okay, in two days.
In two days, yes, but you wouldn't have to start, you know, right away.
Well, you send me the address, I might be able to make it.
Okay, yep.
Will them serve?
How can we have a packet as well that we can send to you?
And you'll enjoy meeting the superintendent.
Oh, I just walked into this for you.
All right, do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move we put Jessica on the jail board.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Chair votes aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
That's going to be more fun than P. Ma.
More often, for sure.
Yeah.
Next, we have the Nelson County Service Authority for the West District. We have David Height and Marshall Saunders.
I'd like to move that we reappoint David Height to the Nelson County Service Authority Board in West District.
I'd like to second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations to Mr. Height for reappointment. And that's all the appointments we have? All right, next, correspondence. Anyone have any correspondence to share? One thing I will mention, I guess you all have your invitation to the retirement celebration. I will not be able to attend, but... Any directives?
Where is, you got the motions?
Yeah. If not, are we ready for a closed session?
Yep.
All right, thank you all for coming. We will now be moving into closed session. Mr. Reed?
I move that the Nelson County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session to discuss the following as permitted by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of field property for a public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. In consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, litigation pertaining to the Region 2000 Services Authority. In consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in the subdivision, subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter.
Very good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.